It is seven o'clock. I'm calling this Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order. We stand if you're able and join us in the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item A, official meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Public meeting of all, I'm sorry, public notice of all means has been given by communication of the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Item B, roll call.
Medved.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Barney's here.
Loth.
Here.
Pollak.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Ewer with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item three, reports. Item A, Mr. Reuter, update. Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. Just a few things to highlight as we finalize our last week before staff and students go into a winter break. This evening, and I believe Mr. Ewer will speak to this during our personnel committee, we discussed our teacher compensation study that's taking place. We've had a lot of teachers show interest, I think over at 65 as of this morning, have submitted to Mr. Noack and I an application to be a part of those focus groups, but I'll let Mr. Ewer speak more to that in the personnel committee. A couple of things on the sports forefront as we're in the winter sports season. Just last, or yes, just last week, Ms. Nerdle, our athletics and activities director, took four student athletes, and one of them is here tonight as our student representative, to the board, to the WA Sportsmanship Summit in Stevens Point where they participated in collaborating with other student athletes across the state discussing, or the area, discussing leadership in sports and being role models as well as representatives of the school district. It's a great honor to be a part of that. We thank Ms. Nerdle for engaging our student athletes in that. Continuing along that theme, this Friday, at halftime of the boys' basketball game, the GHS Boys Basketball Game, our three-time state championship boys' basketball team from 2012-13-14, who set a state record for consecutive wins, as well as runner-up in 2015, they will be honored at halftime, so that should be a great community event. It's been publicized, we'll continue to publicize it this week. Ms. Nerdle is expecting a huge turnout from the community, past and present student athletes. A big thank you to all of our GSD music staff, last week, the week before, even this week. There's been concerts across the district at all different grade levels. This Thursday night at the PAC, I encourage everyone that can make it to come to our high school choir concert. It's always a great show and it's a great way to get into the winter season. And then there's continued concerts because we have so many performers after the winter break as well. So, thank you to our GSD music staff that takes a lot of time beyond the workday to coordinate and put that together, and everyone that shows up. And then, like I said, this is the last week of school for students, teaching staff, and in-building support staff. Winter break will start at the end of the school days on Friday, and we will resume back to school on Tuesday, January 2nd. So, happy holidays to everyone, and thank you.
Thank you. Item B, student representative report. Welcome.
Amy Bell, December shines with a focus on empathy. For a heartwarming toy drive, the upcoming Bell Fest promises to bring our community together with a special emphasis on empathy before winter break. In the classroom, engaging activities keep students engaged as they approaching the holidays. Highlights this season, the first-grade music concert on December 14th showcased the incredible progress and hard work of the talented students, providing a delightful experience for families to cherish. Over at County Line, November and December has been buzzing with excitement. Spirit Days painted the school with vibrant energy, setting the stage for the upcoming holiday break. The PTA orchestrated a variety of events from Popcorn Fridays to collaborating with the Buckses for a school give-back. The third graders enjoyed a fun trip to first stage, while the first graders dazzled with delight during their concert showcasing their dedication. This week, the DI teams are running a candy cane sales, and the comments are counting down the days to winter break eagerly and anticipating a well-deserved rest. At MacArthur, the collective hard work, dedication, and teamwork of the students, teachers, and staff had yielded remarkable results, earning them a four-star rating, signifying that they are exceeding expectations. This achievement is a source of pride for the entire Eagle community. Amongst the focus on learning, the Eagles continue to make school a joyful and positive place. December has been filled with diverse activities, from movie nights to school concerts, to silent auctions, to spelling bees. They even had students from higher grade levels join them to spread the joy of caroling. As they close out 2023, they're embracing the spirit of positivity with one last school spirit week. At Rockfield, the spirit of learning continues alongside festive celebrations during this holiday season. From dress-up days to joyful caroling, students are immersed in a variety of engaging activities. The PTA has organized events for both students and families in December, including a successful fundraiser called Skate and Donate. This event provided an opportunity to contribute to the school while enjoying a roller skating with friends and family. This month's theme is empathy, emphasizing the importance of understanding and connecting with others' feelings. Practicing empathy is a valuable skill that helps build strong and meaningful relationships. At Kennedy, the spirit of giving back is alive and well, with various activities aimed to support local groups and communities. In the first quarter alone, multiple KMS teams have undertaken commendable efforts to make a positive impact. Ms. Quigley's class led the way by collecting used shoes for a sneaker recycling program and gathering toys for our kids' closets. The KMS club, Key Club, remarkable contributions included 582 items for the St. Gabe's and Bonneville Food Pantry, as well as a toy and house drive. FBLA orchestrated a successful socktoberfest, collecting 209 pairs of socks for the Hope House, and they are currently running a March of Dimes campaign. The student council organized a KMS popcorn sales for the season of giving. The collective dedication of students, staff, and the families at KMS reflect a strong commitment to helping others. Notably, they also enjoyed an awesome Best Buddies movie night and celebrated two outstanding spelling bee winners heading off to regionals. They're finishing off with one fun spirit week as they eagerly await the holiday break. The vibrant buzz of activities, sports, and learning continues to fill the halls at the Germantown High School. Winter sports are in full swing, with GHS clubs, meetings, and events taking place as well. The pep band has added new songs to their song list and showcased their talents at the home basketball games. Teachers are diligently covering their last few units before winter break, knowing that students have limited time upon returning in January before semester exams. Adding to the excitement, the student council has kicked off their winter wish week, a cherished tradition featuring Spirit Days, festive music, and the joy of sharing a little treat amongst friends. This delightful week helps maintain high spirits as everyone eagerly approaches the holiday break, making it a wonderful way to conclude the 2023 and usher into the well-deserved break. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always great to get the updates and hear about all the buzz of activity that goes on in our schools. It's amazing when you drive around, even this time of the day, you can see the amount of activities that are going around in our buildings. Any comments, questions?
I would just add to congratulate Abby. She's recently signed a letter of intent for a scholarship to University of Wyoming for swim. So, not only is she our student representative, represents us at the WA Sports Summit, great athlete, great student, but she's also going on to really big things, so congratulations to Abby.
Thank you.
Good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four, citizen comments. I have not seen the sheet. No one has signed up. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item five, consent agenda. Approval of the November 20th, 2023 meeting minutes. Also, approval of teacher resignations. Mr. Noack, you want to go through those?
Sure. We have one resignation to bring forward tonight. That is for Alyssa Schneider, submitted her letter of resignation November 20th. Alyssa was hired in August of 2013 as a speech and language pathologist in the Germantown School District.
Okay, thank you. Item C, approval of future contracts. Mr. Noack?
Thank you. We have two contracts to bring forward, both limited-term contracts. Paige, I believe it's Conny, is a speech path, will be a speech path at County Line Elementary. Paige is being recommended as a result of her resignation. This is a 1.0 FTE, 81-day limited-term contract at $24,086. And Reagan Christ is at Kennedy Middle School, an eighth-grade language arts teacher. She's being recommended again as a result of a teacher resignation. This is a 1.0, 93-day contract for $19,578.
Thank you. And finally, approval of donations. Dr. Reuter?
This evening, we have three donations. The first from Illing Company, donation of rain barrels to the GHS greenhouse project from Basu Jashi Yair Oil Company Incorporated, $1,000 towards the activities at Rockfield, which include 4K and second-grade classes. And Badgerland Striders Running Club donated $350 to our girls' cross-country team at the high school.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Move approval of consent agenda, items A through D.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Ewer with the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Item six, building and grounds. Mr. Pollak.
Yes, thank you. Buildings and grounds met earlier this evening. Mr. Lord provided us a work order report, which should be basically a foundation for us moving forward, to highlight all of the different activities and work efforts that have been done within the GSD. The report today provided us an idea of 270, I think, items long as far as what he and his team and others have done between roughly October and earlier this week. He also led a project recap past and future, which provided us an update on larger projects, bigger items, that he and his team had completed, and what some of the work that's upcoming also entails. So, things like some of the work for the high school courtyard project coming up over the winter break. And then lastly, sorry, not lastly, I also provided an outdoor facilities meeting report to summarize towards the end of November. Dr. Reuter, Sarah Unerdle, myself, and a number of GHS outdoor coaches, and also community members of local organizations, got together, had a town hall-style meeting in which we were able to share a number of thoughts, ideas, wish list items, reality checks to some degree as far as what that group might do moving forward as a community effort. And then lastly, thank you to the Rockford, Rockford, sorry, Rockfield PTA. We approved a motion to add some playground equipment at the school because of a generous donation from the PTA. That is it.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Okay, moving on to item seven, teaching and learning committee. Mr. Ewer.
Teaching and learning committee met earlier this evening. I'll give you the Cliff Notes of that meeting. We heard reports on two main subjects. One, our reading pilot, it's update number four that we received. It's continued in an extended format. We are waiting on the state to provide its recommended resources, or a list of recommended resources. We're confident some that we are piloting, or if not all, will be on that list, but we're not looking to purchase a curriculum until we know that for sure. The good I say that would come out of that right now is we've had an extended look, so we've seen it in multiple phases now, which helps the teachers form opinions and provide us with their input, along with, we will be looking forward to parental and student input. We saw a matrix that's being submitted that was not only built with the administration's help, but, I shouldn't say with the administration's help, by the administration, but with the help of the staff, and input on what criteria that should look like, these particular pilots being rated on. So, we're looking for that data to come back once we get through that section. It looks like January 30th vendors have potentially, that's the stop date for submissions to the state on curriculum they would like to be approved, or denied, or reviewed, I should say. So, we're hoping to know more than that. I will add, with that, there should be some state funds, and we've talked about it in previous meetings, but I just remind everyone, there'll be some state funds to help with that transition, so the timing is in our favor. I think we're ahead of the curve compared to some of the other districts that are taking up this cause post some of the state announcements, so. I'm excited as that continues forward with inputs on all, I would say, four major fronts, parents, teachers, students, and our directors and finance, so it helps. Our second was a KMS, this is just a report and update. KMS is reviewing a potential schedule change for that building. That was brought forward from, kind of sounds like it originated from staff regarding concerns and effectiveness of the current schedule through the principal, and then in partnership with teaching and learning, they're going to continue to review what may or may not be best time usage throughout the day there, so we should see some more information coming forward on that. We had no motions or decisions made, just reports to keep the board abreast, or the committee abreast of the goings-on for teaching and learning.
Okay, any kindless questions?
I think it's important to point out, they're not looking at changing the KMS start and end times, it is the individual blocks within the school day.
Yes, yeah, and I believe in the packet, they have their current, yeah, so it won't be a different start-stop time for it. It's going to be the time management within the current hours given. Good point. It'll be, and thank you for that, because that's, when the discussion arrives, I'm like, we're not going down this road. But, yeah, I think it's going to be for the benefit of our students in that building along with our staff, so. Interesting as that progresses, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll keep it with Mr. Ewer. For item eight, personnel committee.
Personnel committee met earlier this evening. I will race through items A being C. A being teacher resignations, which was discussed in the consent agenda. B, teacher contracts, also discussed there. Item C was our general staffing update, which we were provided. We continue to see a couple positions due to, I don't know, best to say if it's market demand, situational issues that stay open, but we've continued to adapt and try to present creative solutions to that, so we'll continue to monitor that. That report's given to us to keep us abreast of the ever-changing staffing situations throughout the district, so we appreciate that report. And we'll move on to item D, compensation study update. So, the last time I presented the board on this, we had finished, the administration had finished the first portion of that, which was data information gathering of comparable districts and the surrounding areas. Key components there, comparable districts in the immediate surrounding areas, and we've looking to move into phase two of that, which is going to be listening sessions with our own employees, which is obviously a key portion to compensation. It sounds like we have over 60, 64, I believe, currently signed up, and that is open through, and I forget what.
Four o'clock Friday.
Four o'clock Friday, so there could be more. I encourage anyone who was interested in our employment and certified staff to sign up, make yourself available. That is a great place to be heard. Understand that it's a true listening session, a focus group, you'll be asked some questions, it sounds like, and your responses will be greatly, probably not a space for debate or negotiations, but simply to provide your input, so we can, the administration can bring us back that data, and we can plug it in with the other matrix involved in this compensation study. This is some important work the district's doing, and we went into pretty lengthy discussion at the committee on that, so if you'd like to see that, I won't rehash every comment that was made there, but I would recommend looking at it, and you can understand as a board how serious we take this. I think that's important, to listen to the words and pay attention to our actual actions around that, and understand we are serious in moving the district forward with the totality of the compensation that's provided for our staff. I will leave that there. Please review that meeting for that full discussion. That is all I have.
Okay, I'll just add to the last part about the compensation study. The board will be in the future, after that compensation study is completed, be doing a workshop, because I think there's a lot that needs to be explained about compensation across the district and why we're in the position that we're in. The budget, the state funding formula, a lot of things factor into why we make the decisions that we make, and I think it's important that we have a public record that people can look at and see exactly why things are done the way that they're done. So, that'll be coming as well. Thank you.
Work session is open to the public.
It'll be open to the public, absolutely. We'll have discussions open, and it'll be recorded so we can refer to people that have those questions later on after that meeting, to review that tape, and you can learn more, understand more. There's a lot to it, and it will take a couple of hours to go through the complete understanding of how budgets work, how the state funding formula works, how our tax base can be increased or decreased. All of that is a lot of things that takes a long time to understand, and most people don't have the beginning clue, including some of our legislators, unfortunately. So, I think getting that information out there in a clear, concise way is going to be very important to helping us down the road, and hopefully getting the state to fix the state funding formula, because that would help us in a big way. Anyone else?
I guess I'll just add one thing about the architecture of the listening sessions that they'll be conducting. So, it was intentionally, we are going to cross-section buildings, staff longevity, so new staff, old staff, staff in between, specialties, teaching disciplines, whatever you want to refer to it, so to get a totality of a voice of our members and certified staff, which I think is key to that discussion.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? One last time. Last call.
Sorry.
All right. Item nine, finance committee. Mr. Loth.
Yes, the finance committee met earlier this evening. We approved vouchers. Brittany answered a few questions for the committee. Brittany also went through her variance report. She mentioned that it's not 100% complete this month, and she doesn't always bring it to us this month for that reason. But, anyway, she said we could be receiving more grant funds, not yet built into the budget. There are some remaining ESER dollars, and changes will come in January, and that's all we got.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item 10, new business. Item A, discussion in action regarding certified teacher staff wage increase for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Mr. Noack.
Thank you. The administration supports a pay rate increase for certified teaching staff in an amount equal to 4.5%. Increases would be effective July 1, 2023, applied to the 23-24 fiscal year. The attached document notes increased distribution amounts based on the 22-23 teacher-based salary amounts. Negotiations for 23-24 school year began in February of 2023 with communication between the Germantown School District Administration and the Germantown Education Association. GSD administration asked to start the negotiation process in February 2023, and the GEA agreed to meet for the first time with formal negotiations in the fall of 2023, with meetings held on Monday, October 2, 2023, and Wednesday, October 18, 2023. As part of those discussions, we reached a point of impasse. The final offer is noted below, and I will outline its parameters. Final offer from the Germantown Board of Education is as follows. One, an increase of 4.5% derived from base salary amount for a total of $736,669. Distribution will occur in a tiered manner as illustrated in the chart below. Increases will be distributed to the 22-23 base salary, except for salaries at or above $90,000, which will be a base addition of $400, a stipend amount of $1,000. The breakdown of the tiers are below. Those $40,000 to $59,999 will receive $3,764 added to base. Those $60,000 to $74,999 would receive $3,000 added to base. Those $75,000 to $89,999, $2,500 added to base, up to $90,000. Any portion over $90,000 will be done as one-time stipend. Those at $90,000 and above receive a $400 base increase and receive a $1,000 stipend payment to be paid June 30 of 2024. The attached document proposal lists what these proposed increases would mean for each Germantown School District teacher receiving an increase in 23-24 school year. Increase amounts are based on 1.0 FTE with proration for part-time teacher contracts. Adjustments will be made in situations where teachers in one salary tier would pass teachers in subsequent tiers in overall salary for 23-24. And finally, the agreement for 23-24 is for 23-24. In order to receive stipend pay, an eligible certified teacher will need to fulfill their entire 23-24 contract. We ask you to support the recommendation as noted.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a 4.5% pay rate increase to the outlined distribution for certified teaching staff as presented for the 23-24 fiscal year, effective July 1, 2023.
Second. Mr. Ewer with the motion. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Barney.
My question really references our next agenda item, which talks about $90,000 and above, but $90,000 and above is included in this agenda item. So, I just want to make sure if we approve this, that we're not approving something twice for the same group of employees.
Right.
Do you understand my question? Yep. The pools of money are different. The pool of money here is related to base salary. The second agenda item that you're referencing, the next one, is related to stipend money, which is not derived from the base.
Yeah, we can't, so the 4.5% is a negotiated rate. The stipend amount is non-negotiable by law. We can't negotiate that.
We have to separate the two.
So, we have to separate it, and it has to be in two motions.
It's included as it's part of the totality of the process.
Right. I just wanted clarity, because our motion is as presented, and part of what was presented was the stipend and the increase for $90,000 and above, which is covered in our next agenda item.
The 400 for 90 and above is part of the 4.5%. The 1,000 isn't.
Is not.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
I'll just add that I think administration can back me up on this. The reason we went with the tiered formula was to kind of scrunch the pay salary for the teachers. We had a, every year we were given a percentage, and that gap kept widening, so we're trying to bring that together a little bit and help out the lower end and bring them up, is kind of the goal behind this.
Yep, and it is a one-year negotiation. It is not, this isn't.
It is not, this is a, this is one year, this is for this current year. So that, I think that part of the negotiation process and those that were on the team was to do exactly what you said, Mr. Medved, to bring the bottom up. That coupled with the work we're doing through the compensation studies, we know we have a large gap when it comes to compensation for our teaching staff.
And that was the other part of it, looking at what other districts are doing. And going forward, there can be pay increases, adjustments based on the comp study as well. So, all right. Any further questions, comments?
Just, being part of the negotiating team for the first time, I did not participate in the first year of my position on this board. And I would say I demanded it strongly to be involved in it this time around. And I'll say it, as I've been consistent on this message, the low end of our salary isn't getting the job done. So I view this tiered method as a manner and fully support it and to really aggressively attack that, as we know what some of this compensation study is going to show. So we have to take a first step. And to wait till the completion of the compensation study to do that, I don't think was fair to the employees. So I think this is a way to attack that sooner in a financially responsible way to the district. We've heard some staff are very positive about this, some are not, and I can understand that. But I think as a totality for the district, I think this is a good, a good contract. And I think as Mr. Reuter said, this is a one-year scenario. This is not the framework for every year going forward. I've heard multiple narratives in regards to that. But it's, we need to deal in fact and truth. And this is one of those times where we have to be clear. This is an aggressive attack at the low end to compensate these teachers, and 40 grand's not getting it done. So how do we do that while maintaining a balanced budget, while not asking our constituents for a referendum, operational referendum, or operating in deficit? We get creative, and this is how it comes out. So I appreciate the support this has received. Hopefully, it continues to receive it as we move forward with the vote here. It's been a long process, interesting process, sitting on that side of the table. I won't speak to the timeline. I think there were some narratives in this community in regards to timelines and who was or wasn't at fault. I don't know if it's crystal clear picture, but I know when we initiated this discussion, and I know when it ended. And fortunately, it held up getting this process done. So here we are, hopefully we can get it through tonight, get it approved, and get our staff moving in a better financial direction. Thank you.
To your point, I'd just add that, you know, we're at a 4 and 1/2% increase across the district. When I started this 10 years ago, I didn't think we'd ever see a 4.5% increase. I didn't think it was possible. I didn't think it would be sustainable. Unfortunately, other districts are going above that, and they're killing their budgets, they're running deficits, they're closing schools, they're doing a lot of things. I know it's never enough, and I agree with what Mr. Ewer is saying. It'd be great to pay our teachers more. We have a lot of really good teachers, and we're doing what we can. And again, I'll go back to the whole state funding formula, our actual budget, the amount of money that we have. We can't spend more than we get, and we don't. Our budget does not keep up with inflation, as well as, you know, people wanting us to keep up with inflation. We can't pay our teachers at the rate of inflation if we don't have the money. That's, that's the problem we're running into. So thank everyone for their comments, and if anyone has anything else they'd like to add. Mr. Lo.
Just wondering, Mike, if you are prepared to answer the question. We have a progressive group that stated that the starting pay for teachers was the same for the last 10 years. Do you know what it was in 2013? I mean, I was on the board then, but I can't say I kept notes. According to this, it looks like starting pay today is $40,000.
Forty, that, that-
It wasn't 40, 10 years ago, I know that.
That changed to 40, it was, I believe, in the 2015-16 school year. So it's been 40 for a significant number of years. Prior to that, it was, I believe, in the $38,000 range.
Okay, so it was less than this.
It was less than this, but it, we have been at 40, you know, over the course of, since 2015-16. So significant amount of time.
Okay, so we've just bumped it. Well, we haven't bumped it yet, but it looks like we may bump it this evening.
Well, we, no, we won't bump it this evening. That would be something that would potentially result via the compensation study.
Okay.
If we have new teachers today who signed a contract, an initial regular contract for $40,000, that is their amount for this year, and it's not, they're not subject to receive the increase.
All right.
They're eligible to receive the increase.
And one of the things we talked about is, we need to get out of the situation where that base salary is stagnant. There needs to be some kind of an inflationary increase built into it. So the top end goes up, the bottom end goes up, but it stays within that range. That's what we're talking about. So once again, once the compensation study is done, we'll be looking more into that and how we can fix those issues, so that doesn't continue.
I think part of the architecture of this was to ensure nobody leapfrogged anybody. You can see, and you'll see some breakdowns in here, where the adjustment is a little different than what's, and it explains it in the packet, to make sure nobody leapfrogs anyone. And when we look at, we know when the compensation study comes out, and if we look at raising starting pay with that, we're going to be looking at that again, right? To make sure nobody leapfrogs. The amount of work that went into this, in the education that went on behind, looking at what other districts did, looking at what other districts have done. We've heard horror stories from decisions made on these contracts. Anything from the following year slashing benefits? Because now they have to come up with the money to pay for their 6%, 7%, 8%, $75,000 cap, five-year caps, freezes, pay freezes, you can't go bum it. And I don't think anybody has the stomach for that type of action on this board for our staff. I don't think, I don't think those types of things would be appropriate. But if we don't structure these things intelligently and factually, looking five years, right? We're gonna, we could end up like that. The decisions could lead to that. So I understand there's some error on probably the top end of this contract. Understand the district's going to be healthy financially. It's going to be healthy from a staffing point of view, and this is one of the paths to that.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item B, discussion and action regarding certified teaching staff stipend pay for the 2023-2024 fiscal year. Mr. Noak.
Thank you, and this is in connection to the previous agenda item. The administration supports a one-time $1,000 stipend payment for certified teaching staff with salaries over $90,000 a year. The agreement is for the 2023-2024 school year. To receive stipend pay, an eligible certified staff member must fulfill their entire 2023-24 teaching contract. Payment will occur on June 30, 2024. To summarize, the final offer from the Germantown Board of Education is as follows. An increase of 4.5% was derived from base salary amount for a total of $736,669. For certified teaching staff, distribution will occur in a tiered manner, as previously noted, from the 22, 2022-2023 base salary, except for salaries at or above $90,000, which will be a base addition of $400 and a stipend amount of $1,000. That is summarized in the table below. We would ask for the recommendation as noted.
Okay. As Mr. Barney noted earlier, the stipend is separate from the 4.5 negotiated amount, because legally you can't negotiate a stipend and a percentage. So we had to separate it out. So this is over and above the 4.5% negotiated contract. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve $1,000 stipend payment for certified teaching staff with a salary over $90,000 as presented for the 23-24 fiscal year, effective July 1, 2023. Once $90,000 is reached in negotiated wage increase, any portion over $90,000 will be a one-time stipend.
Second. Mr. Ewer with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item C, discussion and action regarding final 2023-2024 professional technical support staff and administrative wage increase. Mr. Noak.
Thank you. Administration is seeking a pay increase for professional technical support staff and administrator groups, excluding the district administrator, in an amount equal to 4.5% over the individuals' 2022-23 wage. This would be effective July 1, 2023, applied to the 2023-2024 fiscal year. We ask for the recommendation as noted.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve a 4.5% pay rate increase for professional technical support staff and administration, excluding the district administrator, as presented for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, effective July 1, 2023.
I'll second.
Mr. Pollack with the second, Mr. Ewer with the second, Mr. Pollack with the motion. Any discussion?
I have some.
Okay.
I think it's important to note, in regards to the timeline with our previous topics, AMB, we, there's some narrative in this, in this community, once again, in regards to holding up these, not promotion, but increases in pay rates to our non-certified staff. And I think fundamentally, they are, while not negotiable, they're not negotiated with in that regards, they do directly correlate to what our certified staff receive. And until we know what that final number looks like, it's hard to make or come forward with a recommendation for this group of employees. I think for us to have come forward, if we would have come forward earlier with this action, and unfortunately, I feel for these employees, as far as the timeline and how it played out, but to come forward with a number that wouldn't have been similar or the same as what certified staff is, if you'd be degradating their service to our district. Unfortunately, due to the length of negotiations that took place, and I believe it speaks to the open-mindedness that was entered into those negotiations, meaning we didn't have a final number set in our head. We didn't want to set a number for this set of staff that wouldn't mirror our other, our certified staff. My opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item D, discussion and action to approve 2024-2025 school year calendar. Mr. Noak.
Thank you. The calendar team met on multiple occasions. The group is listed below. It included representation from high school, middle school, and elementary sites. The calendar, as I've done this a number of years, it's sort of interesting. What we're starting to find in the areas that our calendars are starting to look more and more similar, as we note that you have to start after September 1, or some, September 1 is the, is the starting point. And then when you consider that, you don't want to create a schedule that goes deep into June. When you start to do the minutes, everything sort of squeezes in, and you're somewhat limited relative to the schedule that you create, which is okay. The calendar that we've created for this year, I note some highlights, I'll go through those. It includes a September 3 start date, which is right after the Labor Day break, Sunday, Tuesday. Tuesday, is that right? Yep, Tuesday starts. It includes a June 11 finished, which is consistent with others. As we've done in the past, which many other districts do, the 24-25 school year calendar includes a day off prior to Thanksgiving. That's something that we've heard repeatedly from our teachers and staff, that they appreciate relative to all the preparations that take place on that day. Our winter break for the 24-25 school year includes classes ending on December 20 and resuming on January 2. January 2 of 2024, 25. I lose track. I believe is a Thursday, so we're Thursday, Friday of that week. The proposed 24-25 school year includes a spring break that has classes ending on the 24th of March and resuming on March 31st. That's consistent, definitely consistent with other districts in that there's, depending on where the Easter break falls, we try to utilize that last full week in March for the spring break.
All CISA 1 districts have agreed upon that moving forward as well, that that last full week of March, regardless of where Easter falls, will be spring break, so that it's consistent in the region. So if you live in, you're, you live in Menominee Falls and you're a teacher here, you're not off one week and your kids are off another week, so that there's some consistency in the region.
For the record, that dominates superintendent meeting time.
It's the biggest waste of time. But we came to an agreement, so.
This calendar also includes, since a few weeks down the road from that, a spring holiday of April 17, with holiday on April 17, classes resuming on the 22nd. It also includes staff days off on May 23 and May 26, in observance of Memorial Day. And I would note that that May 23 day on this calendar is noted as a potential snow makeup. We've had to do that, excuse me, had to do that in the past, and we wanted to note it here so that people were aware. In regard to that, and I haven't put this in this type of background before, but as we look at DPI instructional minutes, we always try to build cushion. Every district does that. This particular calendar, because there's differences between high school and middle school and elementary, and when we calculate out the minutes, this particular calendar gives three days of flexibility at the high school, the middle school, and four days of flexibility at the elementary level. The other thing that I didn't note in the bullets is that this particular calendar includes two workdays at the elementary level, which was something that elementary teachers wanted. So with the teachers that were in, took part in the process, they were very observant as to when those occurred, and we feel comfortable with where we're at in that regard. We'd ask that you approve the calendar as recommended.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt as presented the proposed 2024-2025 school year calendar.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in, oh, I'm sorry.
You thought you'd do it. No, I, in regards to what the schedule looks like, I just want to make a comment and in, as far as the input being taken from, and the doors being opened to allow that to occur from the staff on up, shows, and I think we've talked about it a lot tonight, from our pilot program compensation study. And here's another example where this administration is looking for input across the district and to build that effective path line for some upwards leadership from our staff and through, and we hear it here at the board, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you, Calendar Committee. I know how much work that is. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85-1C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data- data of an employee, district administrator, performance review, and administrative contracts.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Ewer with the second. Roll call, please.
Medved.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Loth?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Sagan Botham?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
We are in closed session at 7:50. Thank you all for coming. Please drive home safely.
We are back in open session at 8:51. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve a 4.5% pay rate increase for the district administrator for the 2023-2024 fiscal year effective July 1, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Pollak, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:52. Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.